I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a public comment? We've been right along. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Andrea to go ahead and start the discussion on future ready initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we have today a great opportunity to go over our future ready initiative and how we as a district have taken a systematic or comprehensive approach to our digital learning in the district. So at this time, I'm actually going to turn it over to our director of educational technology, Tom Driscoll, at Cox and Aponia, as well as our assistant superintendent, Daniel Seata. So we're waiting for this to boot up here. Tom, I actually just put out a tweet about an hour ago reinforcing or celebrating that we were one of 42 districts, Tom, or 45 districts in the nation that has been recognized for this work. So we're now on the National Digital Learning Team. We're recognized through Future Ready being one of the 45 beginning districts in the country. I'm going to buy for this work.
Almost there.
Almost there.
So while Tom is just getting us ready, I just want to point out it was very nice to be able to use a tool called Google Slides for us to work on the PowerPoint. Mario was working on it from his end, I was working on it from my end, and we can all collaborate and see each other's writing as we go along. So it was pretty nice, a good way to work. And we have our teachers doing that as well. So teachers across different schools can collaborate on the presentation, whether it be for students or for something that they share with their staff. So it's a great tool.
Well, thank you for stopping. So this is a quick overview of our future ready initiative that we began last fall. And as Dr. Andrea mentioned, the whole point of this is to develop a comprehensive and systemic plan for digital learning and doing it right. And so the first thing was taking a look at what tool we were going to use to help with this planning, and we decided to use the Future Ready framework and dashboard. So what this framework is, is it's a roadmap to help districts decide first, what is our vision for teaching and learning? And what do we want digital learning to look like at First of War? And once we come up with that shared vision of what digital learning is, how do we then plan and implement this transition effectively? And the way that the framework is set up is that it starts with student learning at the center. So what is it that we want students to know and be able to do? And then it has seven different categories, which they call gears. And each one of these needs to work smoothly together for all of this to really scale up quicker. And on top of all of it is collaborative leadership. We have a strong leadership team, making sure that all of these gears are working together well. So as far as why Future Ready, Dr. Andrea, do you want to quickly mention this part?
Hi, Ken. You got the mic on. So we've talked about here why this framework and why Future Ready. It's that all too often, we do things in isolation. So you care for my office, what's the vision, where are we going? But with Future Ready, this is really the action plan. So when you ask about what's about to involve, using this framework that we have a systems approach to defining what teaching and learning looks like in a classroom. It also reinforces and advances our district vision around teaching and learning. I won't get into it tonight, but it is my four essential questions, whether we want all to consider what we're able to do. And then again, the last aspect of it, it provides a strategic action plan for implementation. So as you know, we just finished our district plan. That will be presented at the strategic plan, that will be presented at the end of the month. But this is one tool that we can actually go from theory into action. So hopefully tonight, we will see really a systems approach to our digital learning transformation. So throw back to Tom.
So the first step was to develop a leadership team. And what this team did is we started by, as I mentioned before, what was our shared vision for deeper learning through effective use of technology? And that shared vision was developed, we have a draft of that. And the next step is to actually put our plan together. How are we going to put this into action? So the members of the team are on that next slide there. I don't know if there's a copy of it, but we tried to get a cross-section of the district. So we have a mix of administrators, teachers, we have administrative assistant, school board member, and actually a network manager, Brian. And our new director of technology, Rosenmoore, will be joining this team as well. So we wanted to get input from a wide variety of stakeholders in the district to be part of this team. And then we need to define what digital learning is, because there are a lot of phrases that get thrown out, there are a lot of the educational jargies. We wanted to clarify what do we mean by digital learning? So for instance, like blended learning, flipped learning, a lot of these things get tossed around. But we wanted to define it as digital learning is the strengthening, broadening, or deepening of students' learning to the effective use of technology. So really, it's about learning. How do we improve teaching and learning through the use of technology? Not just using technology for the sake of use. So then, once we came up with that definition of what digital learning actually is, why are we going to use it? Why are we pursuing and implementing digital learning at First of War? So the first key takeaway here is that it helps amplify and accelerate effective teaching. Okay, so it expands the impact of good teaching practices that exist. First is what is project-based learning, peer instruction. Whatever it is, technologies can be leveraged when done well. It can make good teaching even better. More specifically, how it does that is it can personalize instruction. So we can help meet students where they're at from an instructional standpoint, and also giving them more opportunities to choose which path they take based on their interests, based on their passions, and also show what they know in all different ways. Third one, and I mentioned this last fall when I spoke to you guys, is the idea of anytime, anywhere learning. The idea that instructional resources should be available to students anywhere at any time. And digital learning can make that happen. Fourth is digital citizenship. If we're preparing our students to be citizens in this world, we have to prepare them for the digital world that they live in. Okay, so what are the knowledge and skills necessary to be a good citizen in an increasingly digital world? We need to immerse them in these technologies so that they know how to use responsibly and use it, and know how to use it for learning. The fifth is assessments for learning. What I mean by that is this is going to improve the way that teachers can assess student work. It can provide more immediate feedback for the teachers, but also for the students to see if they got things right or wrong, and provide more targeted instruction based on them. The other side of that is students now have the ability to show what they know in many different ways based on these technologies. One example would be in the middle school, one of the math teachers in Sarin had students talking through their thought process into iPads via video that other students in the class would then see and comment. Okay, this was all happening simultaneously with different devices. And they were even commenting on students from other classes from earlier in the day. Now, that's an example of something that simply wouldn't have been possible without these technologies. Okay, so that's another key part of this, is we can improve our assessment process through these digital tools. And then we really want students to focus on communication, collaboration, and innovation. These tools provide students with an environment that they can really hone in on that and focus on that type of learning. An example would be the Google Labs platform. Students can collaborate in real time from any device at any time on work for their class. Okay, that is an opportunity that we're providing them that as far as the digital workspace that we've had prior may not have been possible, that we're now giving them the opportunity to engage in.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I got lost because I thought I had the presentation finally. I was busy looking for it because I wasn't able to. Number one, amplify and accelerate effective teaching. So this is A tool, but not B method?
Correct, yeah. This isn't just about digital technologies, it's about how do we use technology to improve teaching and learning? So really, it's about what are good teaching practices? And how can technology be used to amplify and accelerate and improve the impact that those strategies have on students? And then the last thing is all of this is going to improve student engagement. Okay, so once learning is more personalized, once students have more access to it, once they're getting more timely feedback on what they got right or wrong, once they're able to communicate and collaborate projects, they're going to be more engaged in their work. And we all know that students aren't engaged in their works to be very difficult to learn. And this will improve that level of engagement across the board. So a really quick snapshot of what the framework looks like. Those are the seven gears. So it starts with the student learning at the center, then this curriculum, instruction, and assessment, personalized professional learning, technology and infrastructure, data and privacy, community partnerships, budget and resources, use of space and time. And then, as I mentioned before, the collaborative leadership for effective planning and implementation. And we're going to quickly go through each one of the gears.
When Tom and I, when Tom first brought this to us, Mario and I were very interested in that. Not only was it comprehensive, but it also supported a lot of the work that we're currently doing and that we're moving forward with. So the first gear is curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And the Future Ready framework and the idea of digital learning really supports the work that we've been doing around curriculum and instruction. And our philosophy that instruction is most effective when it's aligned to rigorous standards, when it's student-centered, and when it's connected to the real world and relevant issues. And technology gives us that window out into the world and access to that information. It also addresses the four essential questions that Dr. Andrea hinted to. What do we want all students to know and be able to do? How will we measure it? That's the online assessment piece. What will we do if they're not learning? And that's fair with technology, we can differentiate learning, we can personalize it. And also, for students who are ready, we can advance their learning. So we're not able to do that as well without technology. As teachers are developing new curriculum now and working on instructional approaches and assessments, they're beginning to incorporate technology, experiences, and digital learning. But with the Future Ready plan, we believe that we can advance that further and faster. And currently, we do have some online assessment systems which give us great information on exactly where our students are. So now we'll also have the opportunity to really personalize instruction for them through a variety of tools. So it really supports our efforts in curriculum and instruction. And we'll go to the next gear, which is personalized professional learning. So if we think about all of this work taking place and all of these changes going on, it's evident that teachers and administrators will need a lot of professional learning. So we are happy that the Future Ready plan includes a component for that. So as you know, I'm sure you've heard us talk about digital learning teams. So we have teams of teachers, two to four teachers in each school that are in their second year of intensive training and receiving onsite coaching from Tom. And they're developing effective models of practice. And the plan is that they will then begin to train other teachers. And they've already done that in informal ways, presenting at staff meetings. Recently, the middle school had a day where they were able to bring other teachers into classrooms to watch some of these practices. And it is beginning to grow, classrooms next door, across the hall. They're asking for advice and help, and so it's growing. And we have a lot planned for next year with a full transition to Google Classroom. So we have a lot going on, and the professional learning piece is really essential. More and more, we see teachers that are developing classroom webpages. They're creating videos for parents. They're creating blogs. They're sharing the work that's going on in their classrooms. So having a comprehensive plan like this will really help us to take that to the next level. And we'll go to gear number three.
Okay, this gear is absolutely crucial for all of this to work, and that's technology and infrastructure. And it starts though with the educational strategy. So if you see on the slide there, I have a little compass. The reason I put that there is because our vision for teaching and learning, that should be our compass that points us in the direction for how we need to develop our infrastructure. Okay, our infrastructure should be created to support the quality of digital learning that we want to see in our district. Okay, so it really starts with what we want to see in teaching and learning. And then, once we have that strategy in place, which we've already developed and which we've been working on throughout the year, what type of support, what type of tools, what type of data systems do we need that ensure that this powerful digital learning environment is there for students across the district in every classroom? And there's a lot of work that needs to go in to make that a reality. And a lot of that work's already begun. A lot of work's starting with the infrastructure, with the wiring, the networking, the broadband access, the Wi-Fi access points, the access to devices in classrooms. All of that needs to be available for the students for them to take full advantage of these digital learning opportunities. So this is an essential gear on number three to enable the other things to actually happen.
And to be able to make all of that happen, it comes down to budget and resources. So in the past few years, it's really been a concerted effort to reallocate funds to prioritize technology purchases. And we've been really fortunate to have a supportive school committee and a supportive community in helping us to make sure that we have up-to-date equipment in our schools and that we have the infrastructure, as Tom referenced, to support all of this. So the more devices that we purchase and the increased use of technology, we have to go back and we have to make sure that the wiring and the structures behind it are able to support us. So that's kind of where we are right now. We have a consultant that's working with us, and they're taking a very close look at that, and they're helping us get those pieces into place and really strengthen things. We are also working with the consultant on what's referenced as E-rate funds. So those are funds that we receive back to the district as a reimbursement for technology purchases. And we want to make sure that we're maximizing the use of those funds and getting everything ready. So we have a lot going on behind the scenes. And I want to thank Colleen Silva for her work with the budget and doing what she can to help us identify where we can reallocate funds. So just as an example, years ago, we purchased lots of textbooks. With all of the online resources that are out there now, we're not purchasing as much. So there's a place where we can ship some of that funding over to purchase devices rather than textbooks. So again, the Future Ready framework helps us to always keep that in mind, that it's great to have big ideas, but at the end of the day, you have to make sure that you have the funds to be able to do that. And I think that's about it.
The fifth gear is data and privacy. And this is becoming increasingly important part of a digital learning planning. Is that as we have students engage in more digital learning environments and access more of these tools, we also have to be cognizant of the data in our policies around student data and governance. So part of the Future Ready framework is to give us some assistance and guidance around developing these policies and making sure that teachers understand the policies and know how to implement them in the classroom. Because, you know, from personal experience, when I was teaching, there are a lot of educational technology companies that pitch their products to you all the time. So you have to be clear about what is the district policy regarding that, student data, and communicate that with the staff. So a big part of this plan is to come up with what are those policies? And how do we communicate those with staff? Community partnerships, that's something that technology can really help with from the local level and for the global level. So if we wanted to have students engage with the local communities, whether it be businesses or parent groups, or even connect with people across the world. I know there's this one initiative called Ministry Skype. It's teachers around the world, what they do is they connect on this platform, and they have the students Skype with the other schools. And they ask each other a series of questions, and the whole point is they have to guess what country or state the other school's in. Okay, so sometimes they try to trick the kids a little bit off and say, "You have a school like in the next town." But it's just a way that, that never would have been possible before. But it's a way that they can kind of branch out with their local community or global communities and create partnerships in education.
And we're winding down now. But one of the other things that we've noticed is when we bring all of this technology into the classroom and when teaching styles change, we're realizing that we need more flexible space and we need more flexible furniture. So last year at the high school level, we were able to purchase some flexible furniture. There was a request to replace desks, and we said, "Let's not get the traditional stationary desks that we've been getting, let's get some flexible furniture." And it's really worked out well because it allows the teacher to go from small group collaboration types of teaching to whole group presentation. In just a matter of minutes, students can move the desks, and they much better accommodate a laptop or an iPad. So that's kind of where we're headed. And keeping in mind that it's not just adding more devices, it's thinking of the whole big picture and what does the learning space look like?
Sorry, I think I went off at this point. So this is a key slide. If you go back to the original, I've also printed it out here, the presentation. What you see around all these gears is leadership. So I think we're going and moving forward is unique collaborative leadership. So we need to empower our teachers, our school committee members, our administrators, our students, but in general, our community. To be empowered and build this process, again, more of that comprehensive approach, this is not my vision. I am not going to convince, you know, a grade two teacher, this is how we're going to do it. I want to actually engage in that conversation about what does teaching and learning mean to you and your classroom, and what do you regard as? So through this framework, we're able to have a loose-type relationship. So from my end, it can be really loose, and I want this to happen at the end of grade two. The grade two teachers can tell me, "I'll dig into great technology in that classroom, or that digital learning," so by the end of the year, that all students are meeting efficiently. So what I think is really important is the collaborative leadership. It's not one person's mission, but it's a series of groups thinking aloud and talking about articulating our vision and coming up with strategic plans to get that theory into action. So again, using the mental model of these gears working in conjunction, and then with support together is that collaborative leadership. It's just not one person's mission. So really important aspect of this program.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board? Okay, we'll start with Lynn, and then we're going to Mr. Senia.
Dr. Andre, we have questions. Do you want us to ask them now or at a follow-up discussion?
She can wait, we're ready.
All right, so the flexible furniture, I'm really curious. Who's using it? Because I'm going to go check it out.
So we have a few classrooms here that are in the math department.
Okay.
We're actually just looking at one classroom will be at KMS next year that we're looking at. Again, it's revenue neutral. So each year, we buy replacement desks. Instead of buying the 25 or 30 replacement desks, we're actually just going to outfit a new classroom with the flexible furniture and then move those old furniture to as replacement desks. So it doesn't cost us anything in that budget. And again, what it looks like in the math department might look different than the KMS math teachers in classroom.
Can I ask one more question? And again, maybe this is something that will be discussed at the JSCB. But Dr. Andre, what do you see as the short-term, long-term budgeting needs in regard to this kind of a program?
We're actually looking at, again, reallocation.
Okay.
So we're not looking at drastic increases, but between E-rate and use of E-rate a little differently, which is, that's a whole lunker. Presentation, Colleen, you can do better than I can. But we're looking at E-rate. We are looking at shifting resources. So, you know, when we do look at bringing in new technology, and I know we had a conversation a couple of years ago with the policy subcommittee on what is that, you know, the textbook adoption process versus an online program. So I know that needs to have conversations here, but that doesn't cost us anything. I know that needs to have a lot of school committee on that. So we're just looking at drastic increases or any kind of increases, but I think we can find that within that budget. And more with a program like this, we can actually look, or forecast five years out. So we have a good budget.
Mr. Senia.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Andrea, are all our students ready for technology?
The honest answer? I think I teach students some more ready than some of our adults. So, you know, you're looking at different... So I think that's a high question to answer, so, you know, I'll let Tom go forward. So the question would be, are they ready to use technology to do what? I think it's more the important question. So are they producing or consuming information with technology? Are they writing and responding? Are they producing I O Vs? So I think the really important question is, what do we expect the students to do? And I think this is my true comfort with students using technology to express their ideas as opposed to many of our adults are still using technology as a tool that makes their work more efficient. So I think that's part of this framework.
I'm very excited about the program. I think it's a wonderful thing, and I think you folks taking the initiative to get into this is a wonderful thing. I am just concerned if you're going to have, as an example, some sort of a special program for average and low-performing students to bring them up to snuff. I'm looking at an article right here from U.S. News and World Report. And one of the things it says is, "Low performing fourth graders do poorly in writing tests given by computer, but high performing students do better." And so we recognize in our industry that this is the case. And I'm also looking at something to do with adults, as you were saying, where the kids are more knowledgeable. I agree, my grandchildren and my children just, all they know on the computer is to press the button, and hopefully everything's going to come out right. But one of the things that a particular study came out with, according to a new assessment from the Program for International Assessment of Adult Competencies, U.S. adults rank dead last on technology skills in comparison to 20 other countries. And so I agree with you that adults, many adults like me, are deficient in that area. But the thing is, if these kids don't have, if they don't have computers at home, and a lot of these socioeconomic children don't have them or access to them, and their parents may not bring them to a library to use one or other alternatives where there may be a computer for them to use, I'm just worried that those kids, this is a very dynamic program, I think. And I think it's just a... And I think it's just a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I think, you know, three quarters of our kids probably will do very, very well, but I'm just worried about the fourth quarter, the fourth group. And so I'm wondering if there is some way we can bolster those kids in the technology area for their own sake, more so than of the other higher average and the higher performing kids.
Thank you, Mrs. Samuel. Those are great points. And some of the latest research, especially I have with John Hopkins, is what the new digital divide is, is around, it's not access to the technology, but what they do with it. So they're noticing the more in home and upper socioeconomic students are actually producing with technology where the lower SES are consumers. So they use technology to watch videos, but they're not actually doing anything. So when they get to that writing test, they're not using the technology for critical thinking. So that's where you get into that digital divide, so.
That's the area of what?
And that's the area of them relating to. So again, using the, these eight years together, how do we improve that system so that there are no children that do not have access to great teaching and learning in their classroom? So we're equally as concerned, so thank you for working on it.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you, Ms. McRae.
Well, I mentioned it before, so I'll say it again. I'm worried about the children who don't have the capacity at home to work on the computer, whether it's not having a network in their home or a computer in their home. And when, as we move our expectations forward, how do we accommodate those students? Because when you look at your cable bill, if you have Wi-Fi in your house, that's a big chunk of your bill. And if you buy a computer, $250 or $275 for a homework doesn't seem like much, but it can be, it can be a lot. It can be very daunting for somebody. So I know that maybe 15 or 20 years ago, the town of Bristol talked about having a network of its own for the citizens to connect them on. And it might be something that we may want to consider for our children through one of the or more of the cable providers in this town so that children can access it for educational purposes only in the evening. So I know it's been bandied, you know, bandied about. I know it's sort of pie in the sky, but if we want to make it work, we're going to have to take that accessibility and deliver it across the street into their homes as well. So that's a concern that I have because I think this is great. And I'm only hampered and my use of the computer by what I want to use it for. If I wanted to use it for more, I'd sit down and take the time to learn how to use it more. But the world is about computers and we do need to be working with these children. And the studies do show that the children who have been writing up through grade 10 then have to write on the computer have trouble, but you're working on that and I get that. So that's an okay thing, but I'm worried about after school. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Schofield.
I was just wondering, what you see as the benefits for our special needs learners initiative and digital learning?
We gave a half hour just on that. I was able to sit in on a few classes earlier and I was just amazed. It really was a model of how technology can really enhance and improve education for those special needs populations. Just the way that, I'm sorry, I forget the name of the teacher.
Stephanie.
Stephanie's, Stephanie's class, they had iPads, but a lot of them, it's not just an iPad to do research or to create video, that's their life line, that's how they communicate. And so a lot of these devices really enable them to learn and to be included in the learning environments that they may not have in other ones. I was in a class that, I was a first grade class, I was in a class and they were seamlessly in the classroom, working on every single one of the stations that the other students were using, basically because this technology helped enable them to participate and be included in those activities. So that's really one of the models in our district that are doing technology uses with our special needs populations.
Go ahead. Yep. If you want to add something else, is there?
Yeah, thank you very much. Let's see, a couple of questions here. You know, first of all, my four-year-old grandson is unbelievable, you know? He started out by whack, you know, doing his thing. Just today, he couldn't wait for me to leave the room. He's like washing with his eyes. Now he's, he's on the computer and these kids, boy, they catch up quick, they really do. But I'm especially concerned, I think it was something that I was getting at, that there's some kids, it's just like broccoli, you know? I mean, some kids love it, some kids can never love it, other people, other kids are never gonna love it. So what do you do with the child who's just really having a problem with the method, the approach, the technology they're trying the child to learn on and they just, they just want to use a little more?
That's a great point. And I think that one of the benefits of these tools is that it provides students with multiple modalities to learn. Okay? So they can still learn in a more traditional, say, smaller construction conversation with a teacher, they can learn by writing, they can use the digital tools. But I think the focus of this is that these are just strategies and tools that are in the teacher's toolbox. And we're not saying every teacher has to present this with an iPad. That's just one method of doing it and if it's not for the learner's preference, then that shouldn't be the way that they're instructed.
Okay, I assume you want to pull them in that direction, but we take them, we pull one child and then another.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, it's what's best for that student and, you know, how they learn best. So if that's not the best way that they learn, then we'll use a different instructional strategy.
Okay, another question I have is about, Dr. Andre mentioned a teacher buy-in. You know, I like to watch the film clips of the landings at Normandy, you know? And when that door drops down, the landing crowd, guess what? Get hitting the beach running. I mean, that's the other, the door comes down, get on the beach, that's it. And what I'm hearing is, and I'm not hearing that every teacher is hitting the ground running, the door opens, that is kind of, you know, the buy-in is rather uneven, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it is that way, how do you handle that grade level to grade level where at this particular grade, yeah, the teacher was bang, caught with it. But then now that student goes to the next grade and goes to the teacher in that grade level, isn't as on board as with it as the teacher in previous year?
Yeah, so, I mean, what I understand by the digital learning team is they're taking the lead in a lot of this and then they're going to learn from their colleagues. But to be honest, in defense of some of the teachers that have been a little hesitant of it, some of them simply haven't had the infrastructure and tools to really engage in the digital learning. So I mean, you can't expect a whole lot of them if they don't have the tools and resources to do it. So I think that that's one of the problems. So that's why gear number three is so vital, is that once we shore up our infrastructure and give access to those digital learning resources, we're going to have a lot more teacher buy-in because they'll have access to those tools. And I know that as a teacher, when I was trying a lot of these strategies, I was trying to innovate in the district that I was in before, it was incredibly frustrating when I tried a new strategy and since the Wi-Fi would go down or the network would crash or wouldn't have access to devices today because the devices weren't available. So I think once we shore up the infrastructure, that's going to help a lot, plus learning from their colleagues. We have a strong digital learning team that's going to start scaling up the innovations. Part of my job is to communicate the strategies that they've been working on throughout the year and to get other people in the district to see how it's improving teaching and learning in the classrooms next to them. And I think that itself is going to increase some buy-in.
I just want to reiterate Tom's point is that our teachers have been really, really supportive on change on this initiative. We've been asking for teacher voice every step of the way, but as Tom said, that, and sometimes it's just frustrating because the Wi-Fi is not working or you have, your computers are 15 years old, so it's not that they don't want to do the work, sometimes it's just they can't do the work. So they have it, I don't want anybody to think that our teachers are resistant, but also to this change, they want the infrastructure in place, they want the resources. We, again, using the gears, need to provide the adequate professional development. So once again, I need to commend our Bristol Warren teachers to be in second to none because they see the innovation in moving forward. But they ask the right questions. What's to compelling to buy? Why do we need to change now? Lead us in that direction? Do you have a shared vision and vision? Vision and mission? And we need to be clear in that. And so that's where we're not quite there yet because we need that clarity and cohesion. So, but I just want to reiterate, our teachers haven't been resisting, but they're just asking the right questions to make sure that they can do the work. Again, I'd like to.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll do one more round of comments, questions. So, Ms. McRae.
I would just like to thank Dr. Andre for inviting the school committee as well as community members to visit our schools. And the one thing that I have noticed when we get in classrooms is the excitement and the engagement of students around technology. Students who may not want to do math, when it's in some, utilizing some technological device, they're excited about doing it. They may not want to do social steps, but when it involves technology, they're engaged. And that's one of the pieces that I'm very excited about. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Cindy. Go ahead, Mrs. Samuel. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are you actually doing it now as far as you've taken this and put it right up front and you're working on this now with the teachers and everything? Or is this something with training that you're going to wholly introduce for September?
So that is a great segue to the last couple of slides that we have about where we are in our plan. But next month, our workshop will be with our digital learning team. So actually, the teachers who have been engaged in Core One will show you some of their work in their classrooms and the results of their projects and the student achievements. So that's on the docket for next month. So we'll actually see year one's work and group tops coaching and some of our buy-ins. It's really, really powerful. And it's also, if you recall, for those who've been on the school committee for a number of years now, it's a model that we use for our math and our D M A classrooms, the Model Lab Classroom. So teachers run in from one another. So again, I think our greatest resource is our educators and it's the best job embedded professional development. So we want to create a structure in place where we have Model Lab classrooms around effective teacher and learning, with effective teacher and learning, high student engagement and having the right tools in place. So next year, we expect to have a real 25 Model Lab classrooms where teachers can go learn from one another. So that's the plan and we'll learn a lot more next month.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, thanks.
We have two more slides of where we're going.
All right, go ahead. So the first slide is what we've accomplished to date. First, we created our Future Ready Team. We invited the team members. We had them view our initial district assessment. And then step two is we took a district level leadership assessment together as a team on January 20th. So we went through each one of the gears. We threw that online dashboard, it asked us a series of questions. We graded our district along each one of the gears and essentially gave us a report card of where we're at along each one. And then we got to analyze the report and see where our gaps were as a district. After that, we developed gear teams and we decided to do an outreach to stakeholders across the district. We actually ended up getting over 100 survey responses back from teachers, from parents, from business and community members, from some of these school board members. All of that input from that dashboard was then curated and we got to see a snapshot of what other stakeholders viewed our district along each one of the gears as well. So we have a lot of data, a lot of information that we can use to develop our plan. Now it's step two. Step three is really analyzing the gaps and coming up with strategies. So right now, we're trying to model some of the digital learning by, we're doing a remote meeting for our national board. We're asynchronously working on developing strategies on our plan. And we're also going to have Tom Murray visit us on March 24th. Tom Murray is actually the director of the Future Ready Schools Initiative down in DC. He's coming up here later this month to work with our Future Ready Leadership. So that's going to be really exciting to work with him directly on some of our initiatives.
What day is that?
The 24th.
On March?
Of March, right. Yep. So he's going to be meeting us at Oliver to go over our plan and give us some advice on how do we hone it and turn that into an action plan. So moving forward, our next two steps first is to take our vision statements, which we have drafted out, and turn them into specific action steps. So what are our specific strategies going to be to close our gaps along each gear? And then once we finish that, we're going to assign tasks, who will have responsibility for each one of these strategies. How will we measure our success along each strategy? And then come up with a timetable for when we'll revisit the plan to see the process and the strides that we've made while we enacted the plan. And then the last part is to communicate. Say, "How do we communicate this plan with all the stakeholders throughout the district? How do we connect with other districts around the country?" As Dr. Andre had mentioned, we're one of 45 districts in the country that have gotten this far through the process. And Tom Murray, one of the things he's going to do is help us connect and collaborate with those other districts to see how they're doing with their process. And then it is an ongoing process. We're going to be repeating these steps at certain intervals. Perhaps late next fall, we'll revisit it, take a look at our successes and then develop a new action plan along each year. So that's the part.
Okay, good. Ms. McRae?
Dr. Andre, are there any other districts in Rhode Island that are participating with this particular program?
There's two, West Warren and West, that I know of.
Yeah, come on.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, Dr. Andre, to you, your team and Tom. Well done. Thank you for the presentation this evening. Best of luck with all your endeavors with it and thanks for being cutting edge.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to, motion to, to that, sir.
Thank you, sir. Motion made by Mrs. Samuel, suggested by Mr. Pride. Okay?
Aye.
All of those. Okay, we're going to go into an executive session with the audience. It's for pursuant of open meeting floor 42, 26, dash five, subparagraph A, subparagraph two, for comment. Legal advice, kind of law and litigation. Upon completion of our executive session, we will come back out, we will return to meeting immediately, so we will not take any further action once we can come out here. So I'd ask my colleagues to go there, help me some on.